Good evening. I'd like to call the February ninth, two thousand and twenty-two meeting to order. If everyone could take a seat, please. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you please call the roll? Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Mrs. Blatner, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To govern the world, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all!
Okay, are there any modifications to the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We're going to move on to recognitions and achievements. The first is Mr. Phil Kalkasi from Wheaton-Warranville South High School Chemistry and Physics Teacher, Science Department Chair, National Board Recertification.
Yep, so it's my pleasure to invite Mr. Kalkasi to come up by the podium. So we asked Mr. Kalkasi to come here this evening to be recognized. He is a National Board Certified Teacher who achieved recertification through National Board Certification. And just a little bit of context for the board and community. National Board Certification is a very rigorous professional development program that really takes high-quality teachers through a very self-reflective process to look at their craft as an educator. And achieving National Board Certification is no small feat. Achieving recertification definitely is no small feat. So it's my pleasure tonight to recognize and introduce a really talented educator in District two hundred, Mr. Phil Kalkasi. Mr. Kalkasi?
Thank you. Before I get to a few thank yous of my own, I'd like to thank the board, Dr. Schuler, Erica Loyacano for inviting me to speak here tonight. But I would be remiss if I didn't congratulate my good friend at Wheaton-Warranville South, Coach Rob Harvey, for being nominated and accepted into the Illinois Cross Country and Track and Field Hall of Fame. To get here tonight to be recertified, all I had to do was write a few essays and record a video of my class. But Coach Harvey has coached thousands of kids for two seasons, track and field and cross country for over twenty years at our school. Every morning at Wheaton-Warranville South, I try to get to school pretty early, usually by six a.m., but Coach Harvey is always, always there before me. I can never beat him. I try. And he's always there later than me. And in fact, he's going back after this meeting to Wheaton-Warranville South to help with intramural basketball. So Coach Harvey has put in over twenty years of twelve-hour days to help hundreds and hundreds of kids. In his words, this is what he does every day at school. He teaches our kids to run fast and then turn left. His teams are always great ambassadors for Wheaton-Warranville South and District two hundred. But what is most impressive to me is that he has so much respect for his sport that he cares just as much about the success of athletes at other schools as he does of his own athletes. And that is a measure of a true champion for kids and a true Hall of Famer. So I'd like to congratulate my good friend, Rob Harvey, right over there. As for me, I need to thank our principal, Scott McDermott, for being here tonight, Lori Campos, Dan Corntoyer, Cindy Budzakowski, Amy Nate, Erin Axelson, for always being willing to write letters of recommendation on my behalf as part of this process. Mike Healy, Melissa Calvert, and all the teachers in South Science for their support. Rob Cronky and the girls' basketball coaches for giving me something to worry about besides teaching chemistry every day. And last but not least, South Science teacher Eric Gilts for recording the video that I had to send in of our kids to the National Board. I've said it many times over the past two years that sometimes we as adults don't give our kids enough credit. During the video we had to record last year, I had eight kids in the room with me and seventeen kids at home dialing in on Zoom. Together from Room S two thirty-two and seventeen different locations across the district, we had a discussion, including the much-hated breakout rooms, about something really, really exciting: energy transfer in a combustion reaction. And if you stop and really think about that for a second, it's really amazing what our kids across the district, across the state, and across the country were able to do together last year. So in closing, I'd like to say to my fourth-hour chemistry class from the spring of twenty-one, J L U H M R A L D M E W A E S E K J E E A and L, I want to say that I'm really, really proud of you, and I want to thank you for your time and for your invitation tonight.
Next recognition is Mr. Rob Harvey, Wheaton-Warranville South, Head Coach, Girls Cross Country and Track/Field Coach, Illinois Track and Cross Country Coaches Association Hall of Fame Induction.
So as Mr. Harvey comes up to the podium. Tremendous honor to be recognized right into the Hall of Fame, recognized by your peers, those that enjoy your craft with you. I do have to tell, just in this recognition, so Mr. Kalkasi highlighted, I think, the years of time and opportunity. One of the most memorable experiences I've had thus far in District two hundred. I had the great pleasure of going to the state cross-country meet a couple of years back. And when the race was over, I just happened to be there, I think, right in the moment where Mr. Harvey came together with his athletes. And the emotion, right, and the level of connection truly was something that I haven't seen before in my time in education. It was really inspiring to see not only that love for the sport, but obviously love for the kids. So, Mr. Harvey, we're recognizing and congratulating you here tonight on behalf of the school district. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I thank the board for inviting me here and thank Dr. Schuler and Erica for having me, inviting me. It's an honor. It really is. This is a pro-- it may seem cliche, but it's a program award. I've had the pleasure of being in this district for over twenty years. I've taught in two other districts. I decided to stay in this district because of people, and that's why we're here. It's been supported so much by all the principals I've worked for, Chuck Baker, Dawn Snyder, Dave Claypool, and now Scott McDermott, along with the athletic directors, Lenore Wilcox, Bob Quinn, and now Mike Healy. I have always felt wanted and needed by them and blessed to work with them. I'm also blessed to work in a great department in physical education. I'm blessed to have some wonderful, wonderful coaches and some very, very good teaching friends who surprised me with a few nice words there. But it's amazing that a physical education teacher and a chemistry teacher can have so much to talk about at six o'clock in the morning in the P.E. office, but we do. So, but again, it's about relationships, and when it really, really comes down to it, it's about the kids. The kids motivate me after twenty-some, twenty-seven years, I guess, or maybe more than that. I don't know. When you've done it so long, you forget. And that's, but with the kids and great communities of Wheaton and Warranville that I've been lucky to work in, I now have assistant coaches who are former athletes. I have several alums that also coach at the collegiate level and the high school level and the middle school level, and those are the things that motivate me. But when two thirty-five comes along and I get to go to the fieldhouse or the back circle and coach cross-country and track after a very, very long day and see smiles on the faces of kids who want to get better and want to go run, there's nothing better. So I appreciate all the support that the communities of Wheaton and Warranville have given our programs financially, emotionally, saying hi on the parapath to the kids. But really, when it comes down to it, it's about the kids and my assistance and the program and working in great communities. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Okay. Next is the Board President Report. I have just one thing to mention to board members, and then I have a few comments to make. I did have opportunity Monday to head over to Franklin. And, you know, I know for myself, it had been maybe a month or so since I had been in a school. I think it was right before the holiday break. And there's nothing more energizing than spending some time in our school. So I know we all have adopted schools, and I know we all have busy schedules. But I would encourage each of us, if we can try to get in there before maybe even the next board meeting. It's just, it helps to just kind of refocus and remember why we sit in these seats as we do. I wanted to start out with a few thank yous tonight. First, to our teachers and building staff. We recognize that you bear the heavy lifting in our buildings and have had to react with an ever-changing landscape. Almost two years of unprecedented challenges, and those challenges will most likely continue into the foreseeable future. One thing about a teacher is they can't go and sit in an office and shut their door for a bit and regroup. A teacher must be on from the moment those students walk in their room. It's not easy being a teacher. I've been one myself. And today, it's even more challenging. You wear so many hats each day. We greatly appreciate your time, energy, and commitment. A thank you to parents. We recognize every child comes to us with a unique set of circumstances in their lives, and you too have had to come to grips with that ever-changing landscape. And know that you also must have to try to explain that to your children. No matter the age of the child, our children look to us for answers at times, and those answers are not always clear. Each of us around this table is a parent. You entrust your children to us every day, and we don't take that responsibility lightly. As a mom myself, I know how hard it has been to watch my own daughters as they've lived during this pandemic in their college years. Being a parent right now is really hard. Thank you for your patience, understanding, as we continue down this road together. My final thank you is for the students. We recognize you've had to make a lot of challenges as well over these past two years. Please know our goal is to provide you with the best school experience we can. You are the reason we all sit here at this table. We're committed to keep trying to do what we can for you, with you as the center of our thinking. And lastly, I've spent some time in the past week watching board meetings from other districts that have resulted in having to take pauses and in some cases adjourn meetings because of disruption. Let's model tonight for our students, the district. We can work together. We can solve anything. When we work apart, we solve nothing. Dr. Schuler?
Thank you, Mrs. Crabtree. So in my report this evening, I'm going to just take the board and community through a few slides similar to what I've done in the last few superintendent reports. And I just want to start with a quick recap, not only of where we've been since Sunday, when the board met for an emergency meeting Sunday afternoon, and then communicated out to the community kind of where we've gone since then, and then again, kind of end with our data update. So obviously, the board and community are well aware. We met on Sunday afternoon, made a decision following the emergency meeting that we communicated out to the community. I'll reiterate the thank you both to building staff and certainly to our parents and community. We shifted our attention then, as we brought kids back into the school on Monday morning, to focusing on a couple of things. As the board is well aware, we certainly have students in our district that do have significant medical challenges and needs, often supported by an individualized plan or healthcare plan. And so a huge thank you to Erica Ekstrom for working with our building teams to respond to that, putting protocols together so that we could bring the building teams together to reevaluate, make adjustments where necessary for student plans. We shifted that attention yesterday and into today to looking at some of our students that have not yet returned to school following the adjustment on Monday night. Certainly, first and foremost, we want to make sure we get those students connected to educational services and supports, and then continue to look at how we can support our students and families in being able to return into our school buildings. We've continued to focus on how we support our school culture and environment. I think, Mrs. Crabtree, as you mentioned, this has been a unique opportunity to help our students see the value of respecting individual thought and choice. And I'm not going to say in a public meeting that that hasn't been without challenges this week. We recognize that it has, but we recognize that it's been a great opportunity for our students to not only see but model, right, what that can look like for our community, certainly. And our buildings have continued to focus on that. And so we're going to continue to move forward through this week, focusing on really those three areas. But again, with really the focus on school culture. So as I move into the data update, and again, I just want to remind the board that these data points that we have reported to you at every board meeting since August really are modeled around critical data points that have been deemed as important as we consider adjustments to plan. So back in last, through last summer, when we did have an opportunity as a school district to make some decisions through local control, there were a couple of data points highlighted at the time through CDC, IDPH, and the Illinois State Board of Education. And so we have continued to monitor those points. Throughout this year, we've learned more, right? We've learned more as we've progressed through the year, both from some of our experts at the local level, through the DuPage County Health Department, but also some of the experts that we've continued to stay in contact with, read and learn about. And so again, I'm going to just take you through the data points that I continue to think are incredibly important for us to be mindful and aware of, and then just end with a couple of thoughts here as we move forward. So I'm going to start with three slides that continue to update you on our vaccination rates within the school district. So the first slide being our high school students. And because we've been reporting this now for a long period of time, the graphs are getting a little bit small. Those bars are getting small to read. But our vaccination rate for our high school students is up at eighty-three percent. Have at least initial dose with seventy-six percent fully vaccinated. Middle school, that's climbed to seventy-six percent of our middle school students, or at least first dose, with sixty-nine percent fully vaccinated. And then at our elementary level, we're up to sixty-three percent that are at least first dose with fifty-five percent who are fully vaccinated. Case activity specifically in our schools, again, another important marker as we look at the health of our students. And I recognize that mitigation strategy, number one throughout the pandemic, has been to keep illness out of the school, right? When we know, we want to keep illness out of the school. But this does reflect case activity we've seen. And what you see on the right side of the chart is we've continued to see a decline. Certainly, in the last few weeks, you see the points kind of in the middle of the Omicron surge, where we saw our heaviest case counts of a little over four hundred and fifty student cases a week. We're down to, as of noon today, we're at forty-four for this week. And where that sits kind of at the midweek point, as we've checked that week over week, takes us actually all the way back to the early part of December, when we saw kind of case activity at this point, right, in the middle of the week. So we've continued to see that decline down. Same on the staff side with seven cases thus far this week. This chart really reporting same information. It's just breaking it out by building at the early part of this week. Again, same numbers you saw reflected on the previous chart. Another critical, important factor, as I continue to talk both with our local health department experts and others, is really what are we seeing in terms of severe outcome, right, within our community? What do hospitalization rates look like, both ICU and non-ICU utilization? And again, for our specific ZIP code in our area, what you see is that there was a little bit of an uptick kind of in the middle of the surge, but we're starting to see both vast capacity and utilization come down here in the last couple of days. Case activity within our community or ZIP code, again, we're seeing a drop from the peak. We're a little over two thousand cases was the rolling seven-day average per hundred thousand. I think as of today, that number climbed down just below four hundred. I think it's down to like three ninety-two as of today. So we've continued to see some decline down in that space. We do not have many students that are out on quarantine. That was one of the adjustments we made at the beginning of this year. We are still contact tracing in our schools and presenting that option to families this week, but our number of quarantine students is down. We have continued to offer the test-to-stay option, again, just as a support for families. And again, just want to report, we've had two hundred and ten students that have completed the test-to-stay protocol. We've got nine students that are currently still engaged in the testing cycle. And our positivity rate specifically from all of those tests is a little over two and a half percent that we've seen. Just want to continue to remind certainly the board, as I mentioned before, our number one most significant mitigation strategy is making sure that we're able to keep students who are not well out of our schools. But we have continued to focus significant time and energy on looking at our ventilation systems within schools, making sure that we're increasing air exchanges. And we study that room by room. We've studied over the course of this pandemic, every instructional space and the number of air exchanges that we've seen, that we get and have continued to. We have the highest level of filtration that we can on our systems. We do continue to nightly to INIs all of our classroom spaces, disinfect. We have continued to contact trace and provide notification to our families, and we've left the test-to-stay option in place. And we do continue to have a very detailed investigation protocol when we see multiple cases within a school or an instructional space. We actually exceed what's recommended in terms of that investigation protocol, which again allows us, when we start to see a cluster of cases, to not only see if there is any linkage between them, but to see if there are other adjustments perhaps we need to make specifically in that instructional space. And just as a reminder, again, you see on this next slide, we have done over eighteen hundred of those evaluations through this year, just to make absolutely certain that we are on top of case investigation and case activity. And that continues to be something that's very important to us. And then finally, again, I want to mention. So we have, in the background through this year, continued to look at a tool from MIT. And again, it has not been a decision-maker for us, but what it does is it allows us to look at these multiple mitigation factors together as we make adjustments and start to see changes. It is a tool that does allow us to kind of look at all of those pieces together. Comes out with an outcome that would indicate, you know, this is the projected amount of time that students could be in a space without potential risk of transmission. And we do continue to exceed that eighteen-hour threshold. And just as a reminder, that's what we set last year, right? As we began this year, looked back to our success point all of last year with students in our building. That was the lowest point that we got to last year. And of course, we're comfortable with our plans last year. So what does it mean in terms of next steps? As I mentioned to the board, we have continued dialogue and discussion with our health department, with some of our community expertise and our state partners about steps forward. I'm recommending to the board that at your February twenty-third meeting, we have a discussion about that and really look at a plan to continue to move forward. I recognized and shared in that list of mitigations, right, that we do still have mitigations that are layered on top of our system. And while we've made some adjustments this week, I do think we need a plan in the long term, right, to ensure we can communicate how we move together, right, as we move forward. We obviously want to continue support for our buildings and our staff as they navigate through these adjustments in the plan and obviously continue to support our families as well. So happy to answer any questions about these data points. But again, just wanted to get that out on the table that I would recommend as we move to February twenty-third, your next meeting, that we have that discussion and look at plan.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah. I support that. I think we need to have that conversation for sure. As I think about what informed my point of view over the weekend, you know, there's more than just it. I was thinking about what are the operational challenges to enforce, whatever our approach is going to be? And not putting more pressure on teachers to execute those operational challenges? I'm really concerned about that. And then the second thing that informed my decision were disruptions to learning. And I think those two guiding principles need to be included in our conversation. And I think it's important to talk about it now because I do like this concept of, kind of this off-ramp, and how are we going to work through that as a community? The other piece I'm concerned about, which I think we need to include in that conversation, is the, what we're seeing in the courts. We're seeing mandates, TROs, appeals. I think it's going to be a back-and-forth process for a while. And what I'm not super interested in is flip-flopping our students left and right, back and forth as different guidances, different outcomes, or different actions in the courts take place. So I think we should talk about that as well. What do we think about that? What's our point of view on that? And I think that's a really good, those are good things to include in that conversation. But starting that dialogue is important.
On the twenty-third?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry. Yes.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler? Mr. Paulson?
Yeah, I just, I'm looking forward to the conversation on the twenty-third. I did happen to see the Barrington School District presentation discussion last week, I believe it was. And I'm really intrigued by what a plan like that could mean to us, especially as we get onto the off-ramp, so to speak. I like their multiple layers. To me, this either-or masking solution is not sustainable. I really like the idea of some kind of middle concept that provides different tiers of mitigation. So I don't know what it means for us. I just know that what I saw and what I read was intriguing, and I'd like to consider something like that within our district on the twenty-third.
Other questions or comments for Dr. Schuler?
I just have one technical question. Can you just clarify what the required mitigations are for athletics?
Yeah, so, well, currently, we follow the mitigations that are in place inside of our buildings. As we move into the state series, then you're going to follow the metrics that are laid, or not the metrics, the plan that is laid out by IHSA. Right now, what IHSA has indicated is that you follow whatever's in place for the home team in an athletic contest.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
Other questions or comments? So one thing that I would suggest for board members-- So one thing that I would suggest for board members is over the next week or so, maybe kind of think about and process if you need any information from the staff for that 23rd conversation. You send, you know, Dr. Schuler off an email or something to let him know what it is that you'd like, if there's metrics out there. You know, I don't know how easy it is to pull some of our surrounding states, maybe districts, you know, states that have had kids in school all year without mask mandates or other different things that others, you know, schools or states, you know, districts or states have done. I'd like to be able to see, you know, something as a comparison for that as well.
Chris, one other thing I forgot to mention, and just, again, we'll talk about it on the 23rd, which is the difference between triggers and signals. And I know I'm being a little academic, but what I don't want to get into is these three data points will trigger a decision. I would like to have a conversation about what signals do we think are important, in addition to not just the data, but what's going on in with the health department, what's going on with the hospitals, the people that we're engaging with? I think that's a critical component, too.
Anything that maybe some of those experts that you have spoken with could even share with us as well would be helpful.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Do you have anything else in your report?
No.
All right, next up is public comments. I do see we have quite a few public comments tonight. I welcome also our students that we have here tonight. I am going to read a statement. "In accordance with Board Policy 2.230, members of the public wishing to offer public comment have the opportunity to do so. A public comment sign-up sheet was made available until 7:00 p.m. Board meetings are available for viewing via live stream on our district's YouTube channel. As with all comments, please be aware that it is the board's regular practice to not directly discuss, ask questions, or take action on public comment until the time has been taken to gather adequate information. The board is there to listen. Lack of action or direct response following public comment does not imply any lack of interest in what is being shared. Per Board Policy 2.230, the time allotted for each person to speak during public comment may be shortened to two minutes. To provide the maximum number of people an opportunity to speak, we will do so with that tonight. To preserve the confidentiality, the board and its president request that items relating to either personnel or students be provided to the board privately or in writing for consideration in a future closed session if necessary. The board must protect the civility and decorum of the meeting. Please be respectful for the duties of the board, our district leadership team, and the democratic process in your public comment. Please include your name, whether you are a resident of the district. Limit your comments to two minutes. Mr. Hanlon will time the comments and will raise his hand, and that's when we need to conclude your comments. Please be factual and courteous. Do not include statements that are personally disrespectful, condescending to members of the board or staff. I'm also going to ask that we be respectful to the people that are here who may have differing opinions tonight." Okay, I'll say the first name of the first speaker and then the next one to be ready to go. So first is Kelly Gillenwater with Ryan Kipfer thereafter.
My name is Kelly Gillenwater, and I'm a resident of this district. As of Monday, this past Monday, 695 days have passed since you sent our children home and locked them out of their education. Two weeks, we were told. Had you told me two years ago today that our children would be abused and neglected by their educational system, I would have said, no way. They're all court-mandated reporters. They won't let this happen. Instead, you have, according to Illinois Section 105, 522-12, "Preventing or interfering with a child's attendance at school, whoever by threat, menace, or intimidation, prevents any child entitled to attend a public or non-public school in this state from attending such school or interferes. With any such child's attendance at that school shall be guilty of a Class A misdemeanor." The CDC defines child abuse and neglect as "an act or series of acts of commission or omission by a parent or caregiver, examples of a clergy, coach, or teacher, that results in harm to a child. Any recent act or failure to act on the part of a parent or caretaker which results in the death of serious physical or emotional harm, sexual abuse, or exploitation, and act of failure to act which presents an imminent risk of serious harm." A few months ago, I wrote to you with regards to the lack of education and services provided to the students of the class of 2021 and below. I inquired as to how you were going to remedy our educational losses and all of the medical and educational funds we have lost, as well as the lost wages of families who had to take care of their mentally ill children. You have not reached out to me to discuss this matter. I give you three business days to address the child abuse and neglect, or I will file a claim-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Gillenwater. Next up is Ryan Kipfer with Amanda Severt after.
My name is Ryan Kipfer. I'm a resident in District 200. First, I'd like to say that was a very gracious intro by Mr., I forgot his name already, the science teacher introduced the track coach. That was very nice of him. My point is, the topic I want to discuss tonight has to do with the appeal from the governor's office, the executive branch, and from a various number of different school districts. There's a concept in history, we'll call it propaganda history, called the big lie. The big lie is, you tell a lie big enough, and you repeat it long enough, eventually everyone will believe it. In this case, it's the COVID mitigations. And it's not just about the masks. It's about the kids having a normal school experience where they can interact closely with their peers. And now, at this point, we all know what the truth is and what the lies are. We know that masks don't work, and people are going to say, of course they work. Well, they, I don't see the evidence for that, and you can't find a study from before 2019 where they are useful in stopping the spread of disease. And you can look at other states, and you can see from their numbers, their schools, that masks don't work. We also know that the mitigations are largely a charade, if not entirely a charade. You can have kids on the woodchips who have to wear a mask, but if they step from the wood, no, I'm sorry, if you step from the woodchips to the playground equipment, you have to put on a mask. We know that's nothing but a charade. You have wrestlers rolling around on the ground together. It's the nature of wrestling. They can't shake hands because of COVID mitigations. That's another charade. We all know that these things have been a farce from the beginning. It's always been a farce. We also know that we do things where we count sick people. When have we done that before? We have 500 sick people. We have 200 sick people. That doesn't tell you anything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kipfer. Next up is Amanda Severt. After Amanda is Hannah Gates.
My name is Amanda Severt. I'm a District 200 employee, a City of Wheaton employee, but first and foremost, I'm a mother of multiple children in this district. I have children of both neurotypical and special needs. Since the mandate of masking, I have made the conscious decision to homeschool my younger three children, due to the fact that they cannot understand the social-emotional skills that are needed while looking at one's entire face and hearing tone. Masking has caused my children severe anxiety, to the point that they had to find alternative medatives to cope. While we're focusing so hard on these masks, we lost touch of what we are actually teaching these children in this classroom. My sixth grader cannot write a six-paragraph essay. My eighth grader cannot understand what her friends mean when they're talking to her. And yes, while I pulled my younger first grader, he had an IEP set up for him, as if he had known nothing the entire time he went to Jefferson School. He is actually doing second-grade math with me homeschooling him at home, because I've actually realized his capabilities. You have also, you also have educators that aren't even reading children's IEPs, like one of my children who had ADHD and has it in his plan to go ahead and take mental breaks while he was getting denied going to go take water, which frankly is inexcusable. Going on the vaccine topic, we have caused a segregation within the schools, where children are now unfriending other children just because they are merely unvaccinated. This is the information that should never be discussed in a school setting. You as a board and educators, go back to the focus of education, and I'll keep my focus on my family and the best decisions for my family.
Next up, next up is Hannah Gates, and then Madeline Midle.
Hello, my name is Madeline, and I'm a fourth grader at Wheebsbrook. I hate masks. The last time I had a normal school year was when I was in first grade. In second grade, we went to e-learning, and it was really hard. Since second grade has been an experience, a normal school year, that is not fair. Now that masks are finally optional, it's starting to feel more normal, and I can't tell you how good it feels. I was so tired of getting yelled at and to pull my mask up when I was trying to get some fresh air and breathe. It doesn't feel good to be yelled at by a grown-up when they aren't, when I aren't actually doing anything, anything wrong. My mom and dad always do everything they can to make sure we are safe. Do you really think that any parent would send their kids to school without a mask, masks if it wasn't safe? Do you really care about me like my parents do? Have you ever thought about how we kids feel in all this? It has been years since I've seen my friends' faces, and I haven't really even seen my third or fourth grade teachers' faces, and that's not normal. We are only kids once. Instead of having happy memories of elementary school, we will instead remember the torture you put us through by forcing perfectly healthy kids to wear a mask because you choose to live in fear of something that we have a 99% survival rate from. God put us on the earth with lungs to breathe fresh air and immune systems to fight off viruses. Masks actually stop our bodies from doing what they're meant to do. I'm glad that my parents were brave enough to join the lawsuit and fight for our rights of me and my younger brother and sister. When are you going to be brave enough to fight for my friends? We cannot go back to wearing masks. We finally have a shot for being normal kids for once, so please don't take that away from us. Thank you. Thank you, Madeline.
Next up is, did we miss Hannah? Hannah Gates. After Hannah is Elizabeth Cesaroni.
Hello, my name is Hannah Gates. I have a freshman at Wheaton North High School. My son and I are fully vaccinated. We are healthy people. We are not the risk here. We need to stop the lie that our healthy children are the risk, when this lie is putting them at risk. We need to restore our personal freedoms to choose for ourselves how we parent our children. The few cannot continue to hold at bay the many, and I know that my voice is one of many. We will not lay down our freedoms. As a proud American citizen, I will choose what is best for myself and my family. Masks offer an illusion of security, foster fear, and keep us stuck in a cycle that is not sustainable, offers no solution, and no hope for the future. We need to advocate for our students, our community, and for hope. There is a future and a hope for our schools and for our great nation, and nothing can take that hope away. We are the land of the free, and we need to make our schools great again.
Thank you. Next up is Elizabeth Cesaroni, and then after her is Jacob Verti LaFemina.
Hello, school board members. My name is Elizabeth Cesaroni.
Elizabeth, can you move the microphone maybe down a little closer to yourself? Thank you so much.
Hello, school board members. My name is Elizabeth Cesaroni, and I'm in fifth grade, and I go to Sandberg. This is my sister Hannah. She is in second grade. Today, I want to start off by saying thank you for letting me take off my mask in school. I've been able to breathe now, and also been able to focus better now that I don't have stomach headaches and stomach aches that were caused by masks and how I couldn't breathe correctly. On our first day without mask, it wasn't so good. My teacher segregated me and kids who didn't have masks away from other kids with masks. He also said if you need help from another student, you would have to put on a mask. After school, I told my parents, and they made it right by contacting the principal and teacher right away. My teacher realized it wasn't right. He apologized the next day and said he didn't know how me and my classmates felt. The next day was much better. He made the desk so everyone was spread out instead of table groups, no one was segregated. I am glad that I have a caring teacher that apologized when he realized he was wrong. I have many friends that continue to choose to wear a mask, and that is fine. That is their choice, and thank you for letting me have my choice. I know there are many that don't agree with my choice, and I think it should be taken away, and think it should be taken away. That upsets me and confuses me. Why shouldn't everyone be treated equally? Why are my beliefs and needs less important? I would never tell someone to take off their mask to benefit me. So please do not tell me to put on a mask to benefit you. It is not right. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next up is Jacob, and after Jacob is Louis LaFemina.
My name is Jacob Beltri LaFemina, and I am a middle school student at Monroe Middle School. Over the past few years, I have seen a lot of things change, as in being in the classroom, not being in the classroom, staring at a screen for eight hours, not staring at a screen for eight hours, going between that for close to three years. I came up here to say that I had a support system. I had people that cared about me, that people that supported me and said that this was going to be okay. Other children didn't, however, and those who didn't really couldn't achieve their true potential, and I pray for them. I also pray that the adults that make the decisions make better decisions. And I also want to thank you for taking away the mask or giving people a choice, but it should have been faster. It should have been more swift, and it should have been in consideration that children could not function in a mask, children that could not think in a mask, and children that physically couldn't wear a mask. And I want to really put my heart out there for those who couldn't. But for those who can, I pray that you continue to fight against this. And I also pray that it never goes back to the way it was.
Thank you, Jacob. Louis?
Hi, my name is Louis LaFemina, and I think it is uncomfortable to wear my mask at school. And I also think it is cool how my friends and classmates have the choice to wear a mask and to not wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Next up is Octavian Martinez, and after Octavian is Shannon Lyman.
Just talk right into it, yep.
Okay. Hi, my name is Octavian Japoli Martinez. I'm from Edison Middle School. I just want to say, like, the mask thing, for me, like, it's hard, some people agree with me with this, it's hard to breathe in it, so I really appreciate that it's gone. But there's been some problems at my school. Like, some people have been very picky about, like, anti-vaccines, anti-mask, you must wear a mask. Like, people have been, like, very, like, I would just say bully, I guess. Like, one student in Edison made a, made like a, made like a teacher mad to the point because they were focusing on snacks, like, are you going to bring snacks back? And they're only, like, they're making fun of the teacher, basically. And they're only, like, they're making fun of the teacher, basically. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Octavian. Next up is Shannon Lyman. And after Shannon is John Graham.
Dr. Schuler and Board of Education, thank you again for the opportunity to stand before you tonight. I appreciate you following the law on Sunday and providing a choice for our district as a result of the TRO. Seven months ago, you made a similar decision regarding masking. On July 13th, I was so proud of the leadership of this district by making that decision. So unless information about that mask mandate would have been dropped beforehand that we weren't privy to, I really don't understand why this mask optional decision potentially could be reversed. The work was done. We were ready to be mask optional. And then the governor dropped a mandate. So I don't understand why seven months later, we're still discussing that. But since that mask optional decision was made seven months ago, we have a vaccine now that's been made available for all kindergarten through 12th grade children. That was one of the primary drivers of pushback at that time. We also have a booster that's available. We have more states that have lifted and/or in the process of lifting state mandates, including at the school level. Why aren't we leveraging what these schools have been doing or plan to do for the people that are more vulnerable in our community that we are concerned about? Because we can't protect the minority for the risk of the majority, or at the risk of the majority. We have more data suggesting the ineffectiveness of masking than we did seven months ago. Even CNN's doctor, or CNN's medical analyst, Dr. Wen, recently discussed how the science is changing. Cases are dropping and the use of masks in schools is no longer necessary or effective. Pavloxid has received an emergency use authorization, which is an antiviral pill which is available now to anyone that has contacted COVID within the first five days to help with the symptoms. Based on the district numbers that we shared last month, basically, the district all had a COVID Christmas, which was the gift that kept on giving. We should have close to natural herd immunity at this point. And then also, we have free crack pipes from the federal government to remind us of the health and safety of the American people. Thank you.
Next up is John Graham. After John is Rachel Graham.
My name is, let me move this up. My name is John Graham. I am the father of three children in this district and soon to be the fourth in a few years. I want to read you a brief quote. "To be united is a great thing, but to respect difference may be even a greater thing." Those words I first heard 25 years ago, and they are as true today as they were then. And for some reason, they've stuck with me. And they're extremely powerful today. To raise our kids properly, we have to learn to live with difference and respect others' choices and respect the rule of law. Sunday was inevitably a difficult decision for this board to make. Is it alienated some people and many of us rejoiced? In some ways, though, it was actually a very easy decision, a no-brainer. Because you decided, you sided with the law. A wise person once told me that if you do the right thing, you really have nothing to fear. And so I commend you for your decision on Sunday to lift the mask mandate. Governor Pritzker chose poorly, on the other hand. He does not have and will not have the right to put masks on our children. I assume, Dr. Schuler, that you saw right through his baloney on Sunday. And you led this district by rule of law from this judge. So I commend you again for that. The facts are that these thin, loose-fitting face coverings have been nothing more than a virtue signal. In my house, we're fed up. Members of this community, many who are here tonight, they're fed up too. They're done with the tyranny. And they're done complying. And they're done playing these games. There's real work to do for our children. And I sincerely hope that moving forward, we can put all this behind us and focus on educating kids and their future. Having said that, I know that many of you on this board probably disagree with me on a personal level about my decision and my family's decision to not mask up. And many like-minded parents and I, we're going to respect your decision for your, wearing your mask and how you intend to live your lives and raise your own children. But the question I want to leave with you is, are you going to continue to uphold the rule of law? And allow parents to make medical decisions for their children that they have every right to do?
Next up is Rachel Graham. After Rachel is Kurt Bernard. Kurt Bernard.
Hello. My name is Rachel Graham. I'm a resident of 204 and I have four children, three of which are currently in school here. Upon the recent filing of the TRO, Pritzker said that there were 700 plaintiffs in the lawsuit and that those plaintiffs were the minority. I beg to differ. I started a petition, I started a petition yesterday morning to encourage you to keep masks optional. In less than 36 hours, 1,321 people signed this petition. So I venture to say, we are in no way the minority. Looks a lot more like the majority. I saw those wanting to re-require masks, starting a petition as well. I think they started a few days before I did. As of 6:10 this evening, they had 696 signatures. And I printed off all this information for you guys to look at. So I'll just give it to the closest board member. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Kurt Bernard. And after that is Michael Myers.
Good evening. Kurt Brummel. My wife and I have three kids in the school district. I'm a metallurgical engineer by trade. And I live by the math and the science in all I do. You can ask any of my kids what the speed of light is and they will tell you to the decimal because it's important to know the speed of light. And I'm also, their dad is a science nerd. So, I believe that the character of every person has, if you will, five legs to their stool that they sit on. There's the physical, there's the relational, there's the emotional, there's spiritual, and there is the attitudinal leg. Now, as we all understand from the paradigm of a stool, one or two legs could get damaged and the stool will still stand. But if three legs are damaged, the stool will fall over. In this case, I'd say four of these legs have been damaged through the COVID vaccine, through this pandemic. The one leg that stood was a spiritual one. And we've been praying for the decision that this board made last weekend. So, I think that we need to address, I implore you as our board, to keep the other legs of that standing. My youngest struggles with ADD. And he went from Bs and Cs to Ds and Fs. And it, he just needs that relational. And he needs to see people's faces. I pick him up when I'm in town and the three days this week, he said, "Dad, I gotta tell you, school is fun again." I haven't heard him say that in two years, or three years, for that matter. He said, everybody's smiling. The teachers, you can see their faces. When we do something right, they smile. When someone does something kind of jokingly, they smirk. And if it's wrong, you can see by their inflection. They need that. My youngest needs that the most. So I implore you, these decisions are not just following the law, but it's doing the best thing for our kids. I ask you to do that.
Next up is Michael Myers. And after Michael Myers is Patty Cross.
Hello, I'm Michael Myers. I have two students in the Wheaton Public Schools. Monday was the very first day where both kids came home and said, "Dad, today was finally better." It does concern me that a teacher on that same day told my son that this is only temporary. The district's going to make an appeal. And we're going to get this back to normal. These comments prove to me that mask mandates have been failing our children. Troubles me that my son's being told by a teacher that his right to obey the law and exercise a health choice is not considered normal. Scientists in schools around the world are waking up to the fact that the benefits of masks are oversold and the risks are too high. Our kids are suffering more under COVID policies than they've been from the virus itself. There are so many physical and psychological harms linked to the prolonged mask use. Our students are more afraid, anxious, worried, and depressed than ever before. And it grieves me to read that the suicide rates of students is higher than ever before. Saddens me that masks are dividing students and family in our community. It upsets me to know that they are being used as instruments of discrimination in our schools these past three days. None of this is acceptable, my friends. You must remember that we, the parents, not the schools, we are the health authorities for our kids. And each of us are to keep doing what we are doing for our kids because that's what brings us back to being normal. Thank you.
Next up is Patty Cross. After Patty is Mike Lefito.
Good evening. My name is Patty Cross. I have two kids in the district. Sophomore at South and an 8th grader here at Hubble. I just want to say that the last three days have been awesome. My kids have come home, they have more energy, they have more spirit. They don't have a headache. They don't rush to bed to go to sleep because they are able to breathe in oxygen, which is fantastic. In 2020, September 2020, my daughter, who is epileptic, we went to virtual learning. And she went from two seizures a month to over 20 seizures in the month of September. It was an extreme medical emergency for us. We got our doctors involved. And the guidance from the community was to go ahead and they put me in the direction of different medical exemptions and things like that within the district and the chain of command to go through the district, which was very helpful. And we got it all situated. I'm hearing a lot of people in the community talk about their medical conditions that the masks, for the good of the student body, is interfering. I'm going to give you the same advice that you gave me in September of 2020. Work with the district. Work with the medical exemptions that are in file. The American Disabilities Act is not meant to inconvenience the learning of the entire student body for specific medical conditions. Thank you.
Next up is Mike Lefito. After Mike Lefito is Elise Cahill.
I first saw that sign three months ago. And it resonated with me. I don't know how many of you watched on Twitter District 203 board meeting on Monday. And there was a father that said he would never be able to forgive himself. And he hopes that his daughter would be able to forgive him. I thank you for showing up. I see faces here that I've never seen at this board meeting. People have had enough. They've had enough. I want to thank you guys for doing the right thing on Sunday. I know it's not easy. Being a leader is not easy. I said the quote before. Steve Jobs once said, "You want to make people happy, sell ice cream." Guess what? People would be pissed off that it's too cold, not the right flavors. You guys have a thankless job. I am thankful you came in on a Sunday. You stepped, you had an arm sling. You stepped away from your family. Continue to do the right thing, please. Put the kids in front of politics. Put the kids in front of the message from the unions. I read an excerpt from what District 200 Union sent out to the teachers. This is not the fringe movement. We are not the fringe movement. And we are not the minority. Dr. Schuler, I apologize to you and others that have taken on some hateful things from community members. It's not right. It's not right. I appreciate you and I applaud you. And I applaud the rest of them. You know, we talk about inclusion and treating people with respect. For the last year and a half, we haven't gotten our way. We haven't gotten our way for our kids to be unmasked and we stayed classy. Now, there's some outliers on both sides, but I can tell you this. We are thankful for you, school board members. Kids over politics and kids over unions. 80% of the kids over at Edison are unmasked and they're having an amazing time. They're loving it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lefito.
Appreciate it.
Next up is Elise Cahill. And after Elise is Willow Becker. Is Elise here? Elise Cahill? After Elise will be Willow Becker.
Hello. My name is Elise Cahill and I am a mom to three District 200 students. I am also a product of District 200. This is my first time physically attending a board meeting and my first time publicly expressing my thoughts, beliefs, and displeasure for a community that I once felt so connected to. I am here tonight sad, broken-hearted, frustrated, and seeking a permanent solution that includes choice, that's not mandated by an order or our governor. March 13th, 2020 is a date I will never forget. It marks the last day of unity among this community. For the last 698 days, many of this community have been at odds with each other. These 698 days have been long, tiring, emotional, confusing, and outright awful. Awful for our teachers, board members, parents, and students. And it's time to be done with the nonsense. Our community is hurting. Many like me are hurting from the divisiveness, the nasty name-calling, the finger-pointing, and the arguing. The real issue here is not COVID. It's discord. And it's time to take a step back and humble ourselves. COVID is never going to go away. And for some, the fear of it, getting it, will never cease. For others, there is no fear. Some believe masks work while others do not. Some believe the vaccine is safe while others do not. Whatever you believe to choose is okay. We've heard from parents on both sides, month after month, about what they want and believe. You've all been heard, but yet we all stand here divided. There is no winner in this type of debate. We're all losers when our children and teachers are suffering. When will we come to a mutual understanding that both ways of thinking are perfectly okay? Monday was an absolute disaster. We had students fearing their peers, teachers feeling at odds with their coworkers. And don't get me started about the social media posts from parents and students. Some of you really ought to be ashamed of yourselves. Monday, my happy-go-lucky 5th grader was in tears. The tension within her school was too much for her to handle. No child, no matter where your beliefs lie, should have to experience what our children are experiencing. To the board, I ask you, how do we move forward from here? How do we reunite this community?
Next up is Willow Becker. And after Willow is Brooke Gennaro.
Hello, my name is Willow Becker. I am in 7th grade and I'm a student in Edison Middle School. First off, I'd like to thank Dr. Schuler and the board for following the Constitution and law and letting us students be mask-free. When I found out that masks were going to be optional, I was more than excited. But one of the main focuses was we need to be respectful of everyone, whether they choose to wear a mask or not. But what I have witnessed and heard over the three days that masks have been optional have shocked me. Edison Cares is the model that my school follows. C meaning collaborative, A meaning accountable, R meaning respectful, E meaning empathic, and S meaning safe. I'd like to focus on the R in cares, respectful. When the mask mandate resumed and we all had to attend school with our masks back on, as defeated as this made myself and majority of my peers feel, we did our best to respect your policy and make everyone feel safer around us, which is the S in cares, safe. At times, I did struggle, but I was never disrespectful to being threatened and bullied by teachers and administrations. Now that the mask mandate has once again been lifted, it is now time for all administration and teachers to make us feel safe and respected, just as we did for you. What I've witnessed is completely disgusting, how teachers have singled out students who have chosen not to wear a mask by making students who have not chosen to wear a mask sit in the back of the classroom with the windows open for air circulation. If teachers expect us to give, if teachers expect us to give them respect, teachers need to, they need to pay it back. Teachers need to respect our beliefs and stop pushing theirs upon us. I do not feel that this is a safe learning environment if teachers continue to discriminate on only some students. It is saddening to me that teachers think it is okay to segregate their classroom without even giving any thought about the E in cares, which is empathic. The judgment has been made that it is safe to wear a mask or not. We all need to accept this and respect each other's decisions and focus on getting an education in the classroom. Thank you.
Next up is Brooke Gennaro. And after Brooke is Harold Lomps.
My name is Brooke Gennaro. I am a resident. I have a 1st and 3rd grader at Weasbrooke. For anyone who fears moving away from universal masking, great news. You can continue to wear one. If masks are effective, it shouldn't matter to anyone if my family members are participating. if my family members are participating in wearing them or not. If masks work, they can wear theirs and be protected. Those in favor of mask mandates rarely, if ever, discuss statistics, like how, as of four days ago, the CDC showed a total of 836 total pediatric deaths related to COVID since the beginning of the pandemic. This is less than 0.001% of COVID deaths. And by the way, this number does not specify between children who died from COVID versus children who died from another cause and happened to be COVID-positive. People may argue masking is a small inconvenience for the greater good. However, masking kids does not come without consequences. It causes significant social and emotional harm. It impairs verbal and nonverbal communication. It has shown a decrease in student progress in academics, which quite frankly is a district we cannot afford. It has been a major factor in the adolescent mental health crisis. To all the parents who are worried about an immunocompromised child now that masks are no longer mandatory, are you aware of the CUSD-200 Home Hospital Instruction Medical Certification Form? It's very black and white, literally and figuratively. Your doctor fills it out if your child will or is anticipated to be absent from school for 10 days or more due to a medical condition. The student can then be offered experiences equivalent to those afforded to other students at the same grade level remotely. If children and district employees having the option to be maskless is truly to the detriment of anyone's child and/or family, there is no logical reason someone would not be seeking this path. We cannot continue to impose an intervention like masking on thousands of our students in district that provides little discernible benefit as validated by scientific research. When the TRO was granted, the judge said, this type of evil is exactly what the law was intended to constrain. In emails, Fauci said, masks don't work.
Thank you very much.
Tonight, I'm saying you've had everyone's kid your choice. It's now time for my kid.
Next up is Harold Longs. And after Harold is Nathan Mead.
Good evening. I'm really disappointed that this board limits free speech at board meetings. One meeting, you can speak for three minutes and the next meeting, two minutes. You are elected by voters and supposed to represent us, not stifle our free speech. Also, limiting public comments to 30 minutes is wrong. This past Monday, your neighboring school, District 203, had over two hours of public comments. The public comment rules need to revert it back to the old rules. In the past, before public comments begin, a statement was read. It states, "The board is here to listen to you and if you want further discussion, come to chat with the board." I could not attend the last chat, but I heard from attendees that the board had almost no dialogue with the public. I heard the board was directed not to respond to public because of the Open Meetings Act. This is news to me. I remember being at the SSC for a chat with Brad and other board members, having a conversation about sexting and other problems female students were having at Edison. I've also been to chats at both high schools where the board and the students had conversation. Why the change? It is my belief the board no longer cares about students, parents and taxpayers. Who is the board protecting? The format of chat with the board has to go back to the way it used to be and allow fruitful conversation to take place. I'm also disappointed the board members are not expressing their own opinions or commenting on topics. By keeping silent on topics, it adds to dividing our community. No matter what happens or how the vote goes, there will be a group that would be supportive and another group that will attack you. The board needs to bring this community together by being transparent with the public, by expressing comments and opinions. Thank you.
Next up is Nathan Mead. And after Nathan is Kim Anderson.
Well, good afternoon. And I just want to say thank you for broadcasting this on YouTube because these young people have did such an amazing job. Yes. The good news is Governor Pritzker might be able to see this from Lake Geneva or Florida. So that's great. I want to thank, I want to thank Attorney Tom DeVore. I want to thank the judge. I want to thank the parents that were a part of this lawsuit. And here's why. Because today, my five-year-old, who has a speech impediment and my three-year-old who has a speech impediment, as much as I would like to blame my father-in-law for these, it's actually my fault. But my son came home and he said, Dad, I learned how to say T, T, T. And he can say P, P, P. And he could say shhh. And he could say phuuu. And he could not learn these things with a mask. He couldn't. And my heart goes out to our community of kids that English is not their first language and they're trying to learn English. And we need to have our fine and amazing speech teachers be able to use tools, such as using a sucker, to be able to put in a young person's mouth so that they can learn to say phuuu. That's the tools that Chris Salagi, that your elementary speech teachers are utilizing. And they can't do that with these cloth masks. And this is an option. There is no hate for people that do need to wear these masks. There are prayers. There are people that have immunocomparable issues. And as a community, we pray for those people. Thank you.
Next up is Kim Anderson. After Kim is Justin Khan.
Hi, my name is Kimberly and I have a first grader at Washington. Dear Board of Education and Schuler, I was so glad that you decided to follow the court ruling and the law and give our children a choice to mask. As a rape victim, covering my nose and mouth is a huge trigger for me. And if I were to wear a mask for extended periods, I would have anxiety attacks. It was a really horrible experience for me for the past two years. Now, think about the kids who may have experienced that at home. Having your nose and your mouth covered as a child so you can't scream for help is a trigger. And that's the same way that a mask feels. So thank you for helping them have a choice. But what exactly is going to be the plan if the masks go back to mandatory because of the TRO? They will not, they will not, um, how will you help all of those kids deal with the already declining mental health? What about the students who are too afraid to speak up for help like I was when I was a kid? Will the school psychologists have tools to help them and the younger students? Will there be resources spent on that? Because this yo-yo back and forth is going to crush the students. We need to find a happy medium, especially when we have young kids who are afraid to take off their mask because they're afraid to get their teacher sick because their teacher told them that. We need to spend our money and our resources on helping those who need it, such as the immunocompromised. Our youngest kids in our pre-K need masks optional to learn facial expressions, like everyone has said, and obviously for the speech reasons. The governor lifting the mask, masking everywhere but in schools is just wrong. Like I've said before, everywhere our kids go besides school, they're mask-free. Churches are mask optional. Lots of activities outside of school are mask optional and they don't social distance. Most of the kids after school hang out and they are not wearing a mask. So I'm just wondering if it goes back because of the TRO, what's going to happen? And when are we going to find out when, what the rate is for the past three days of the COVID increase going up? When are the parents going to be told about that? Thank you.
Next up is Justin Khan. After Justin is Brendan Davidson. Justin?
Hello. My name is Justin Khan. I'm a parent of a student in this district. I will be honest, I am disappointed with the decision that was made as the ruling was passed down on Friday. There was a closed meeting that was rushed through on Sunday. I do understand that attorneys were consulted. However, this is a medical issue. I'm not clear why no medical professionals were consulted on their opinions or on CDC guidance. Additionally, since this was a closed meeting, are we going to have the minutes for that meeting? And also, who all voted for what? Will those be made available to us? Is there any answer from the board at this time or?
It's not our practice to answer. We can have somebody follow. Dr. Schuler could follow up with you after the, after the meeting.
I think a public statement on the webpage would be best, especially since this is such a hot topic at the moment.
Sir, you can go ahead and keep finishing your comments.
Okay. So otherwise, yes, if the TRO happens and the mask mandate goes back, are you going to be following that or are you going to be following your own guidance? We have all these questions. We have a lot of concerns and we would like some more transparency on the website available to us to know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Brendan Davidson. After that is Joe Matusch? Is Brendan here?
Hi, my name is Brendan and I'm in-
Sir, can you, Brendan, can you speak right into the microphone?
My name is Brendan and I am in fourth grade and thank you for making masks optional. When I had, when we had to wear a mask, every time, it kept like getting messed up. And then every time we had to adjust the mask, we would have to go get up and then go all the way to the hand sanitizer thing and we had to keep getting up. And then with the mask on, you just can't, like, it's hard to breathe and then you can't focus and-
Thank you for helping. Go ahead, Brendan. You can start.
When you, with the mask on, you can't breathe and then you can like a little bit, but then it's hard to, when it's hard to breathe, you can't really focus and everyone just has their heads down on the desk.
Thank you, Brendan. After, next up is Joe Matusch. And I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly. Followed by Jessica Banazek.
You were close. It's okay. My name is Joe Maddick and I'm a parent of a child in District 200. I just wanted to thank our superintendent for communicating clearly this past weekend. I wanted to thank all of you for volunteering your time this school year. Most of all, I wanted to thank the teachers for teaching our kids, for helping them adapt to the challenges this year has presented. I hope we all continue to work together to be positive examples for our kids during these unpredictable times. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Jessica Banazek and then followed by Jessica Hockett.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Jessica Banazek and I am a parent in the district. I have two children, one at Wheaton Memorial South and one at the Transition Program. So tonight, I heard a quote earlier that we don't protect the vulnerable at the expense of the majority. I just want everyone to just think about that. What does, what that says? This is a public school system designed to educate all students and while doing so, to protect the health and safety of all students, not most students, not 99% of the students, all students. The public health and medical communities are unwavering in their guidance to require masks at this time indoors in schools. The choice that was made by this board, the choice that was made by this board and administration last Sunday was not in accordance with public health guidance and it was not made with the health and safety of all students in mind. If that were the case, since our community case rate is triple what it was in the fall and it is plateaued, it is not sinking, we would still be wearing masks in school. Since the choice was made, though, in the most abrupt of ways, I charged the board and administration to be proactive. There is an appeal in process. If that appeal is granted, will the district go back to a mask mandate? Will they not? Regardless of the answer, please let your community know what your plan is. Two weeks from now is too far. We need to know now what the plan is. Because I'm telling you, these kids have, they have been through a lot. Not only the people, the plethora of people here who tonight who had their stories. There are people for whom wearing masks is very important to them and their families. And you know what? They're not here tonight because we have 100 people here not masked. So, you know, I'm not finished. I'm not finished. I'm concerned with the lack of urgency regarding this matter. February 23rd is two weeks away. Right now, we have plateaued in our case rate and we need to have a plan now. Thank you.
Next up is Jessica Hockett. After Jessica is Amy Kipfer.
What's up? What's up? I'm back. I'm back. You cut me off last time, but I'm here. I want to commend you for following the law. Here we go. Multiple rulings, not just Grishows, have concurred that under Illinois law, namely the IDPH Act and administrative rules, a mask is a form of modified quarantine, a device intended to limit disease transmission. So that means that only IDPH and the County Health Department have the authority to issue an order or order an individual or groups of individuals to wear one. So DuPage County Health Department has to send an order, the judge noted, to the person or group of people being told to quarantine. That order is subject to each person's right to object and be afforded to due process. IDPH cannot grant or share the authority to do this with the governor, ISB or y'all. If a district wants to require masks, it has to develop or have already developed its policies in accordance with the rules for developing policies and, this is key, be tethered to a relevant authoritative statute or statutes in the Illinois School Code. The only possible statute I see in the Illinois School Code is the school uniform and dress code statute. You haven't cited that in your face coverings policy. In fact, your face coverings policy, I gave it to you, it is untethered from statute. I think it's the only policy in your book that it doesn't, doesn't have a statute with it. That is a dangerous place to be legally, dangerous. So it's not lawful unless the Supreme Court of Illinois decides that the EOs and the voided emergency rules do grant the authority to you to mandate masks and face coverings. You can't do so without dealing with the IDPH Act or doing the dress code statute thing and conceding to the religious objection that I made to you in August.
Thank you, Ms. Hockett. Next up is Amy Kipfer. After Amy is Kristi, Kristi LaFamina.
Good evening. I'm Amy Kipfer. We all know, I've been here several times. I've been coming to every board meeting for months. I am here tonight because I'm actually frustrated, angry. I usually commend everyone. I always pray for all of you, but tonight, I'm disappointed. I know that teachers work hard. People don't like to talk about teachers or touch the teachers, but I have to bring up the topic. If a teacher is putting kids in the back of the room and opening the windows because kids are wearing masks or not, they should be fired. If a teacher, if a teacher has a prize box for vaccinated or unvaccinated, fired. If a teacher takes a hand pull of who's vaccinated or unvaccinated, fired. If a teacher tells people they can't be in a group because they're wearing a mask or not masked, fired. be in a group because they're wearing a mask or not masked, fired. I'm sorry, but this is not the burden of the children. 623 kids have died from COVID in the last two years out of 55 million in the United States. That number is horrible because not one child should ever have to die, but unfortunately before COVID, children were dying too. What does that number tell you? Zero in DuPage children have died. Suicide? That's not the case unfortunately. What does that number tell you? I keep thinking, why aren't we listening to this number? It's because we're putting the grownups, the teachers, the staff before the children. Because we're- are the grownups scared? I'm sorry, but you can make a choice not to work too. If you're a nurse and you don't want to go to work because you're scared, you can quit. You're an adult. Children need an education. All children should be able to get a public education. I keep hearing about the minority immunized compromise.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Kristi LaFamina and after that is Don Nebraska.
Hello, can you hear me? My name's Kristi LaFamina. I'm a parent of three children in the district. I'm a product of the district. So I want to talk about what choice means. The definition is the act of choosing the power, right, or liberty to choose, an alternative, one that is chosen, a number or variety from which to choose. Decisions are part of our everyday life ranging from what we eat to how we respond to someone's snide comments. We all face choices, big and small, every day. So how does someone decide? What drives you to choose one option over another? There's love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, self-control, educated. These are all factors that encourage us to consider how our decisions affect others and also lead to positive results. To talk about the importance of choice, you have to talk about democracy. At- We teach reading, writing, and math, but by having students do them, but we don't teach democracy in real life. We lecture it. By these values simply cannot successfully promote in the absence of choice. So a reminder of the fact was provided by a man who recalled being taught that my highest duty was to help those in need, but added he learned a lesson in the context of how important it was to quote, "obey promptly the wishes of commands of my parents, teachers, priests, and indeed of all adults. Whatever they said was always right." This man was Rudolph Haas, a commandment of Auschwitz. A commitment to helping is important, but the environment in which such values are taught emphasizes obedience rather than autonomy and at that it's all lost. I believe it's time to call the bluff on all the education systems, on our government systems that are leading with the wrong intentions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Don Nebraska and after that is Eric Jerpy. I'm sorry, Don Nebraska? Nope. Then if Don is not here, Eric Jerpy?
Hello, my name is Eric Jerpy. I am a parent of three children in the district. I'm blessed to have three healthy children who love school, love their school activities. I'm also very happy to have you here as our administration and board members. I know you have an often thankless job and most of you on a non-paid basis, so I appreciate what you do. That said, I personally disagree with the decision that was made on Sunday. While I don't trust Governor Pritzker to make health decisions, I also don't look to this group to make health decisions. I think we have a CDC, a Department of Public Health, a county health department for that. That's not why I'm here tonight though. The decision's been made and I think we need to look forward now. So like many have said, I think there needs to be a focus on keeping things respectful in school, once again reinforcing character and helping the kids to get through what's a tough time no matter what side you're on. The other thing I think we need to do is be proactive about the vulnerable school population. There are people who can't go back to school now or who feel unsafe going back and I really hope that there is a focus on looking at what can be done for those folks. Relegating them to working at home is unacceptable. Separate but equal has not gotten any better with age. So I saw some signs in the presentation tonight that there is that forward look and I hope that continues. Thank you.
Okay, next up is David Somer.
My name is David Somer. My wife Julie was born here in Wheaton and graduated from Wheaton North. I've lived here for over 20 years. My son's a senior at Wheaton North. He's our sixth child to attend there. The governor today announced that mask mandates are being lifted in Illinois. Except in public schools. Are you kidding me? Please tell me this stunned you. Please tell me you were disappointed. Please tell me you were enraged at this backward, flat earth thinking. Children are the least impacted population when it comes to COVID. The flu is now three times more dangerous than COVID is for kids. I hope you've seen these numbers. These kids have suffered enough with these illegal mandates. I am insulted that this board joined the appeal of the judge's ruling with Governor Pritzker. I really want to stay classy and I will, but your weakness and foolishness will hopefully be rewarded with a quick departure from the board in the next election. I know there's at least one here that it does not apply to. You have facilitated division in our community. Forty-one states now do not have mask requirements in school. Please wake up. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment. Okay. Next on- next on the agenda is our consent agenda. Acceptance of gift to Wheaton North High School Fund a Falcon Program. Approval to post AP Spanish Literature and Culture textbook for community review. Approval to post AP Art History textbook for community review. Approval to post AP French and Culture textbook for community review. Approval to post AP Physics textbook for community review. Approval to post Introduction to Teaching textbook for community review. Approval to post Accounting 1 and 2 textbook for community review. Approval to post Forensic Science textbook for community review. Approval to post Web Design 1 and 2 textbook for community review. Approval to post French 4 textbook for community review. Approval of ROE building permits for 2022 summer architectural capital projects. Approval of bills payable and payroll. Approval of Minutes January 12th, 2022 open. January 26th, 2022 open. And approval to destroy recordings of closed sessions prior to September 2020 as allowable by law. Approval of personnel reports to include employment, resignation, retirement, and leave of absence of administrative, certified, classified, and non-union staff. Are there any items board members want removed from the consent agenda? Okay, Dr. Schuler, any additional information?
No additional information.
Board members, any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. I ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Moved by Mrs. Booton, second by Mr. Hanlon. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is the Policy Approval Consent Agenda. The following 31 revised policy numbers are for approval of posting, correct?
Correct.
Yes, thank you. 2.105, 2.110, 2.120, 2.20, 2.220, 2.260, 3.40, 3.50, 3.60, 4.175, 4.60, 5.20, 5.200, 5.220, 5.30, 6.120, 6.135, 6.15, 6.20, 6.220, 6.300, 6.340, 7.10, 7.150, 7.250, 7.260, 7.310, 7.340, 7.345, 7.70, 7.80. Dr. Schuler, I believed I made a mistake when I read this. These are for approval, not for posting.
I'm sorry, yeah, these are for approval. Yeah, so just clarification, these are the policies you reviewed at the last meeting, agreed to post, they've been posted. I've received any public comment on any of the posted policies, so they are recommended for approval tonight.
Okay. Are there any- is there any other information, Dr. Schuler?
No.
Any questions or comments from board members? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion and a second to approve the Policy Approval Consent Agenda as presented.
Still moved.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Long. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next up is the Policy Posting Consent Agenda. The following 22 revised policy numbers are for approval to post for public review and comment. 4.160, 4.170, 5.10, 5.100, 5.125, 5.150, 5.185, 5.250, 5.330, 5.50, 5.90, 6.180, 6.50, 7.160, 7.180, 7.190, 7.20, 7.200, 7.210, 7.240, 7.30, 7.60. Are there any items board members want removed from the Policy Posting Consent Agenda? Dr. Schuler, any other information?
Yeah, I just- I just want to provide an answer to a couple of questions that came in. We had a few questions from board members on policies. I just want to give a little clarification too, as we post them. Number one, just a reminder, 4.160 was a policy that was pulled off of the last meeting. That was the one that had to deal with pesticides. The sentence that was of a concern was removed. Just clarification, that did come directly from a law, so that statement that was in policy is in law, but it was agreed by the folks at press that it doesn't make a lot of sense, but they are still awaiting the Department of Agriculture to promulgate rules around that one and did not feel it was necessary for us to have the sentence in our policy. So we just removed that one and brought it back. There was a question on 5.100 as to why it's limited to grades kindergarten through 8. It's just the way that the law is articulated in terms of, those are all required professional development elements and that's what's articulated specifically in the school code. 5.250, I think there was a question about, it was about child bereavement leave and whether that's paid. We do pay it, so if an individual does have time, we pay it. I think the question, Mrs. Bladner, is just the way that that specific law is written. It is not required to be paid. Our local practice though, is that if the individual does have time, we allow it to be paid. Five point-
I guess maybe I'm not understanding why our policy would say it's not then.
Because our policy is reflecting what's actually in the law, so it's required, what's reflected. Now, you may have some circumstances where a person doesn't have available leave to them and if that's the case, we do not extend free paid days if a person doesn't have any available leave to them.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. 5.185, there was a question related to FMLA and I think a specific section on why if it's an employee and spouse, there still is a limit to time. Just a reminder, FMLA is what speaks to an actual medical situation where an individual has a certain amount of time off. After birth of a child or adoption of a child, there's a prescribed window for that. So it is not relative to whether there- so it's not specific just to the employee, it's specific to the duration of the allowed medical window of time. That's why that is limited specifically for situations where you're talking about birth of a child or adoption of a child.
So maybe I'm reading it wrong. The way I read it was that if we have two employees who are spouses combined, they would be limited to 12 weeks?
Correct.
And that doesn't seem quite right because if, you know, one hus- like if the husband worked at a different employer, he would be entitled to 12 weeks and then our employee would be entitled to 12 weeks. So almost kind of being penalized that they-
But necessity for the whole thing is the actual medical condition that necessitates the leave. So the difference in that is that, so if you have a family that adopts a child, there's a defined window of time that's considered the medical need, right? The time that applies to FMLA. That doesn't get doubled just because you have two employees, right? It is a defined window of time following birth of a child or adoption of a child.
Because they're at the same employer?
In this case, it's saying if they're at the same employer, the defined medical window of time does not change. Just because there- it's a husband and a wife that are-
So maybe this will clarify or help me. So if 12 weeks is determined to be the birth of a child, if that's the- so both the husband and wife who are- or partners who are employees in our district could take the full 12 weeks together?
It could.
But not separate?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That helps.
And then there was a question on 7290. I didn't- I don't think that policy was posted. I don't know if that was the wrong numbering.
That was pulled.
Oh, yes. So that one is not on here. That 7290 was pulled off of this agenda. It was on originally, it's been pulled off.
Okay, I didn't get notice that it was pulled, I don't think. But maybe I did in all of the emails that were sent. It's possible. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from board members?
I do.
I have, I just have one. On the previous vote, it showed Dr. Yabo voting no on the screen. Can we just sync that up when- before we close?
What's that? We've- I'm sorry, hold on. I'm hearing two different things. I'm sorry, Jason, what'd you say? I got you. Yeah, so we will make sure that the record reflects that it was a 7-0 vote. Thank you.
Mrs. Booton?
Yeah, I have a question on, it's on 720, but it relates to 7.1, I'm sorry, 7.180 about, it's about basically the policy of how kids, I'm sorry, how they report like bullying and intimidation and that kind of thing. And there was a question of that I saw in the committee report on 7.20 on how that was implemented in the school and it referenced 7.180 and that policy says the policy must be distributed annually to parents, guardians, students, and school personnel, including new employees when hired, and must also be provided periodically through the school year to students and faculty. And I just was wondering how we do that. How is it, because it's in the handbooks, I believe, but then how do we provide it periodically throughout the school year? Or do we?
Yeah, so the one, your handbooks now are posted, so they are online regularly. I guess your question is do we, how do we regularly point parents to that? And that's a, Dr. Kyle?
Yeah, when we, we're actually working on the update for the 2223 handbook. So when it does get posted, we communicate that to parents. It's also online. It's also through newsletters. It's available on the web. Those are different ways that we communicate the handbook. And if you're talking about 7180, that's, those are the different ways we do it.
Okay, and to students, two- Okay, and to students, too?
Students can walk through at different levels, elementary, middle, and high school. Like I know high school, you'll bring students down to talk about different parts of the handbook that are there that are important. They also get parents when they register their kid. On Synergy, there's a, there's a sign-off sheet that doesn't say they've read it, but it says they know where it is.
Yeah.
So we also track that way to communicate the handbook so that people at least know where it is, and if they need to go to it, it's there. But at different levels, they do communicate it differently to students, but at the start of every school year, students are aware of the handbook, where they can get it, the updates, things that are important within the school community.
Mrs. Booton, anything else?
No.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I ask for a motion and a second to approve the policy posting consent agenda as presented.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Hanlon.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Booton. Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. There are no action items tonight. Oral reports, Department of Innovation and Technology, infrastructure update. I know Mr. Spencer is getting ready to go up there. Dr. Schuler, anything you want to add prior to that?
He is, no, I'm going to hand it right over to, actually, I'm going to bring you the clicker.
Good evening, board. I thought technology would be an exciting enough topic to keep people here, but I won't take offense. Tonight, I want to present to you what traditionally is presented to you with the Master Technology Plan. This, as you recall, the position that's now formed in this department has a boxes and wires side and more of an instructional innovation side. So this presentation tonight will focus on the boxes and wire infrastructure side of the department. Before we start, I really want to start with some celebrations. And in order to start with some celebrations, I think it's really important that we take a look at our current landscape of where we've been, not only this year, but even before this current year. We know currently that some students still find themselves in periods of at-home learning. We know that cybersecurity threats to public institutions are increasing, and we've heard from staff that they increasingly need digital tools, knowing that students are going to find themselves learning in a different, in different learning environments. Our, with the help of all of you in our department, we have some celebrations that address those points. Now, every student has a device that they take home with them so that they can learn anytime, anywhere. Our department has also taken a number of important steps to keep the data of staff and students safe, and we'll go into some specific measures that we've taken on that front. Our department has also identified a number of essential digital tools that allows staff to create new and meaningful learning opportunities that match any learning environment they might find themselves in. And it's my hope that when I come back to the board later this spring, we'll go ahead and share some examples of how they're doing that. So if you recall, there were main categories or buckets that fell into the Master Technology Plan. They were universal access, core infrastructure hardware, that's the blue light that you see above you, anything that keeps our network running, operational systems and software, those would be things like our student information system, our business software, finance, things like that. Our classroom hardware, that would be projectors, and now it would be our one-to-one initiative with Chromebooks. And a recent addition, cybersecurity measures to keep our data of staff and students secure. Knowing those buckets earlier in the school year, I also outlined for the board on the infrastructure side, some key goals and priorities that the Department of Innovation and Technology was going to try and accomplish this year. So what I would like to do tonight is to walk you through some of the goals and priorities of things that we've achieved in those areas that I just mentioned. Starting with supporting universal access. Another celebration, as we just talked about, is that we can now say that all students do have universal access to technology. We are now one-to-one. We still, however, probably need to consider calling this universal access to connectivity. We still are faced with some students who do find themselves possibly not having consistent access to Wi-Fi. So to meet that need, we as a district have hotspots that families who need consistent access to Wi-Fi can go and have a hotspot and continue their learning experience at home. Currently, these hotspots are funded via federal grant. As of today, the federal government hasn't yet committed to renewing that funding. It's my hope that, given the current landscape of where we find ourselves, that the government will re-up that funding in some form or fashion, or somebody else will step up, but if not, we will have to find alternative paths to ensure that funding happens, because we do not want to disrupt the learning experience for students. As far as ensuring a functioning network, this is the true boxes and wires element of priorities this year. So think of it like a traffic cop. There are pieces of equipment called switches that take all of the data and voice from our central hub, our district office, and send it out to the buildings in our district. We were able to, with our current budget, to update those switches. We also, with that update, were able to eliminate some older switches and actually have a cost savings of about $23,000 a year. So as you update some of this equipment, other older equipment falls off, and you no longer have to pay for maintenance, warranty, things like that. So you do see a cost savings when you do upgrade some of our infrastructure equipment. As far as adhering to SOPA, as you'll recall, Illinois has a law that says any digital tool that a teacher is using with students, it must be vetted for data and privacy requirements. So phase one of SOPA compliance this year was to ensure that any digital tool a teacher used with students was properly vetted. So to do that, we have a piece of software that we subscribe to called Learn Platform. What teachers do is if they plan on using a digital tool with students, they go to Learn Platform, see if it's already been vetted, and then make the appropriate decision. If it hasn't been vetted yet, they can submit a request, and then we do our due diligence to try and get that digital tool vetted to make sure that a third-party vendor is protecting any data that they collect on our students. That's phase one. Phase two, which we'll probably carry on into next year and the year after, is that even though a tool might be SOPA compliant, we still need to make sure it's also instructionally recommended. And that's been kind of our next step that we want to take, right? That just because it's legal doesn't mean always that maybe it's the best choice, right? There's a lot of choices out there, there's a lot of companies out there that are trying to get teachers money and trying to get them to use things, but we want to give them a set of criteria about how to make the best choice. Our next goal is that now that we're one-to-one, one-to-one also comes with it some other ancillary costs, namely, how much does it cost to keep all of our devices maintained? So I want to transition briefly here. In your green folders, you have a supplementary sheet that looks like a spreadsheet. And on this spreadsheet, I want to point out for the board some specific numbers of how we're doing as far as breakage rates and how much it's costing just to maintain our one-to-one program. So if you'll recall, published in our student handbooks, we have a fee schedule. The first repair for a Chromebook is free to the student. If a student goes past their first repair, there's an increasing scale of how much we charge the student. The only exceptions to that scale are things that cannot be repaired or things that are just flat-out lost. So if a student loses a charger, if a student loses a stylus, those get charged full because it cannot be repaired. If a Chromebook gets dropped, ran over by a car, and cannot be repaired, it's charged a full replacement cost. So crunching some numbers, in the middle of your sheet, I have listed there how many students currently have reached their first-time breakage for at least repair. We have approximately 399 students who have already reached their first-repair status. Now, I will be honest that this number is possibly somewhat low, because we have a number of buildings who will be getting new Chromebooks next year, and those aren't necessarily repairable. The older ones are not being repaired, we just replace them with spare ones that we have on hand. So the 399 you see there are the most recent Chromebooks that we have purchased as of last year. I also want you to, also want you to observe that out of those 399 repairs, our biggest repair is screens. 353 of those 399 first-time offenses are broken screens. And above that, I have listed for you how much it costs to repair those screens. So our elementary buildings use the Dell Chromebooks that do not have touchscreens, and if one of those screens were to break, it's $52. Our middle schools use a similar Chromebook, however, it has touch capability, those are $90. Our high school has an even higher model from Acer with a stylus. If those screens break, it's $140. So just to point out for the board, currently, we are coming in at around almost $9,000 just in repairing screens, because as the fee schedule mentions, the first repair is free. Looking down at the chart that has technology fees, these are fees for students who have either reached their second repair, because we start charging for a second repair, or have lost something that we have to charge full cost for, or have damaged their Chromebook to the point where it cannot be repaired. What you'll notice is in those situations, we're looking at about 20, 23,000 almost dollars of fees that we're attempting to collect from students thus far. This number is also slightly inflated, because the high schools have a number of Chromebooks that were full, full replacement cost that they have not gotten back yet. So my hope is that we will recover those, but just in the transition of students graduating, transferring, things like that, sometimes those, those numbers or those Chromebooks take a little bit while to come back. Out of that $22,000, we've collected about, almost $5,000 of those dollars back. So I just wanted to point that out for the board, that it is something that we probably do have to keep an eye on as far as budgetary concerns, that even though we're one-to-one, there are costs other than just buying the Chromebooks that we have to be prepared for. The next goal are all of our cybersecurity measures we've taken as a department to keep staff and students safe. So I want to point out some of the main cybersecurity measures we've taken this year. So our basic, most general cybersecurity measures fall under basic security monitoring, basic housekeeping kinds of things, making sure our firewall and filters are configured properly, they're updated and tested regularly. I also want to point out that we also make sure that all of the same security and web filtering that we do on students' Chromebooks here while they're in district, do follow them when they go home, so they're, they are safe even when they leave our buildings. The biggest cybersecurity measure we undertook this year is that we performed a comprehensive penetration test. What this test does is that we hire an outside vendor basically to hack into our network to see if they can find any vulnerabilities, and if they find vulnerabilities, they let us know, we patch them, and we fix them. So I want to go over briefly some of the findings from that penetration test. There are two ways that a hacker or this third-party vendor uses or employs to get access to our network. The first is through external tools or external services that we normally grant access to. So for instance, we have our finance and business software that we grant access to our networks so they can talk to each other. We also grant our student information system access to our network so they can talk to each other, right? There are certain systems that we have that just need to be able to talk to outside vendors. What hackers will do is they will see if there's any exploit within that connection that they can hop in on and come into our network. When they tested all of the tools that we grant access to our network, they did find one vulnerability. However, since then, we have identified it, we've patched it, and things are, and things are good to go. I will mention that in this second bullet point here, this third, the vendor that we have used mentioned that even though they were able to gain access through this outside tool, because we forced two-factor authentication, which is, you know, when you go to your banking website and you have to put in a code and make sure it's you, they couldn't get anywhere. So they were stopped immediately. They got on, but they couldn't get anywhere. So they said, "Single-handedly, the best thing that you did in this district was put two-factor authentication for all staff email and for all pertinent sensitive data systems." The other way that a hacker or malicious third-party might use to gain access to the system is through internal measures. So that could be sitting out in the parking lot, trying to get on the Wi-Fi, could be walking through the building, plugging something into one of our network ports, it could be putting a USB drive into a computer, it's those kinds of things. They did also find vulnerability through those measures, and what happened was, and I'll mention this a little bit on, explain this a little bit more... I'll mention this a little bit, explain this a little bit more on the next slide, is that we have a number, or we have or had a number of staff who have used their CUSD200 email addresses to sign up for third-party services, educational or not. Chances are that whatever password they used to sign up for a third-party site is also the same password that they probably used to log into their laptop. So if a third-party website has a data breach or there's a data leak, there are literally treasure troves of emails and passwords sitting out there for hackers to use to see if the passwords are still active, and that's what they tried here. They found these big lists, they noticed some of those lists had CUSD200 email addresses on, and they just decided to say, "Let's see if these passwords still work," and some of them did. So we do have some recommendations that I'll get to on the next slide, but overall, we got a very, very high grade after our penetration test. I know that even though they did find one vulnerability externally and one vulnerability internally, these are very, very manageable fixes with a little bit of education. So there was nothing glaring, outstanding as far as our network vulnerabilities. The last piece that I'll mention here for cybersecurity measures, it's always important that we keep educating staff about phishing scams, right? We always need to educate staff how to identify when malicious actors are trying to gain information unlawfully, either through downloading something, clicking links, things like that. So we're always looking at phishing campaign education for staff. So after all of those things that I mentioned, here are some of the recommendations that we got from our third-party vendor who helped with our penetration test. As I mentioned, they said that two-factor authentication was the biggest tool that we implemented this year and to continue using it wherever possible. Yes, it might kind of, might take a couple extra seconds for a staff member to log in every so often, but it's keeping us safe. As far as the recommendation for staff who possibly had a password that was leaked somewhere else, in the future, in the near future, we will be requiring stronger passwords. So instead of eight-character passwords, we're looking to move to 14 to 16-character passwords. And the way that we're going to educate staff on how to make passwords is that we're going to move to passphrases. Basically, a passphrase is no longer the random numbers and letters and symbols. Basically, you just take random words and put them in a sentence. So we hope that with stronger passwords, we will have a more secure network. We're also going to blacklist commonly-used passwords. I'm sure many of you have seen lists like password123, don't use that. Unfortunately, we have staff who are using such passwords. So we're going to blacklist those. We're also going to do just basic things like monitoring, patching, critical network infrastructure regularly. We're going to keep continuing educating staff on those phishing scams. And then as far as penetration tests, we're going to conduct smaller internal penetration tests yearly and full external tests every three years based on industry standards. Last but not least, we've also drafted a ransomware and data breach protocol. I won't go into the details of that, but the actual text of that protocol is also included in your green folders if you wish to read the actual text of it, but what I've done here is giving you a general overview of some of the items that you'll see in that protocol. So the first part of that protocol, should we ever find ourselves in the unfortunate event that a malicious third-party has gained access to our network and is basically holding all of our data ransom. The first step in any good plan is to be proactive. Those are all the things I mentioned regarding cybersecurity first, right? The best offense is a good defense, is that how the saying goes? Next, if we should though be unfortunate and be victims of a ransomware attack, we do have the formation of a response team. So this is mainly people in the Department of Innovation and Technology and select SLT members who would be in charge of communication both to the school community and staff at large. Following that formation of a response team, we also have to consider things like prioritizing what agencies need to be contacted for guidance and next steps. When do we contact the FBI? When do we contact our insurance provider? Those particular agencies who can give us good guidance on how to handle these situations. The last two are also to prioritize what systems need to be brought back online first. So if we've handled any type of ransomware attack successfully, we don't want our district at a disadvantage, and we want to get back up and running, students learning as soon as possible. So in that protocol, we prioritized what specific systems should be, should come back online first so that we can get back to business as semi-usual. Part of our plan two is to also ensure that we maintain sufficient backups of critical information and data. I will say that our department is excellent at making sure not only do we have plenty of backups, but those backups come in many different forms. So we store them both in the cloud and we also store them on physical tapes. So if we had a ransomware attack, we actually, we actually have physical backups that we store in the district so that we do have information that can be brought back. So those backups and the systems that we use to make sure that critical information isn't lost or compromised. These, these next two slides are kind of meant to give, not kind of, but are meant to give the board an overview of kind of the cost of doing business and reaching these priorities and goals for years to come, right? A lot of these goals will come up year after year, just in different forms, right? There will always be infrastructure projects that need to be worked on, there will always need to be tools that teachers will need, now there will always be devices that students need in their hands. This is going to necessitate some dollar amounts associated with these priorities and goals. And what you'll notice is that, yes, the department budget is going to increase somewhat significantly, but I wanted to point out to the board three main buckets of where those increases are coming from. So you'll notice in that first category, lease payments and classroom equipment. Right now, we have about $470,000 that we spend in lease payments for technology. That number is going to balloon to about 1.4 million next year, but if you'll notice, $930,000, the difference between this fiscal year and next fiscal year, is the lease payment from the Chromebooks that we went one-to-one. The first lease payment was paid using ESER funds. That is why now we have to probably find a way to bring it into a normal operational budget. As far as network hardware goes, we spend about $300,000 each year on the physical equipment that keeps the Wi-Fi running and any network plugin that we have for our equipment. As Dr. O'Keefe mentioned at his last presentation, we are requesting a one-time, $1 million payment to get all of our network infrastructure caught up into a predictable cycle. There are a number of pieces of equipment that have reached end-of-life, some of them a little bit longer. While they still function just fine, it does cost money to maintain and get somebody out and make sure that it's patched properly, and so there is probably a point where we have to consider, is it costing more to upkeep old equipment and keep kind of chasing our tail, or can we invest upfront and get new equipment, which again, will lead to some cost savings because the old equipment and all the expenses that we have to pay for upkeep, maintenance, patching, will fall off. And then if we can get that $1 million one-time payment, we can, through our regular budget, it will probably go up a little bit, right? $300,000, the cost of network equipment is going to go up. Network equipment is very, very expensive, but we would comfortably say that $400,000, $410,000 after that one-time fee should be enough to put us on a predictable maintenance schedule as far as network hardware. The other big increase that you'll see in the budget comes from online digital tools. We spend about $160,000 currently on digital tool subscriptions. We've added about $175,000 of money through ESER funds. Again, these are tools that are very, very vital to the learning experience. These are tools that are used very often by teachers. One of these tools is Google itself. So I, in my, in my suggestion would be that we find a way to absorb that cost, knowing that ESER won't be around forever. So you'll notice that just in those three buckets, you do see about a $2.1 million difference between fiscal year 2022 and next year fiscal year 2023. I will mention that in that $1 million one-time payment, there is still ESER money available that we could possibly reallocate. So we are looking to see if there is monies available through the ESER grant for those one-time costs. The last budget slide, I also wanted to give the board a general overview of the department as a whole. So you'll notice that our current operating budget is 2.6 million as a whole. Next year is, would probably balloon to 4.2, keeping in mind that there's that 1 million one-time increase, but after fiscal year 2023, a normalized operating budget would be about 3.8 million. So about a $1.2 million increase from what we see currently. And again, that 1.2 million comes mainly from those three buckets that I just talked about, the cost of Chromebooks, the cost of the extra digital tools, and just the increase of how much it costs to buy infrastructure equipment from year to year. Last but not least, we always have a spot on the dashboard to kind of let the community know how we're doing as far as achieving our technology goals. I kind of agree with my predecessor that if we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, we're at least making progress, right? I think we have made great progress and we've achieved a lot, but the nature of technology is always changing. We're always going to have something to do and something to achieve. But I think this year, just in those six bullet points that I've outlined for you tonight, I think we've made great, great progress. So with that, any questions from anyone on the board?
Any questions for Mr. Spencer, Mr. Lumm?
A few.
Can we go first?
I think almost all of them are dollar questions. Rob can ask the IT question.
I'm going to defer all my questions.
The first one is on the hotspots.
Yep.
What's the cost?
So we, we currently don't pay anything.
No, I know.
For hotspots, I think it comes out, I could tell you, it's $6,000 a month. I don't know exactly how many hotspots we purchased, but I know that we bill T-Mobile $6,000 and they cover the cost through the emergency connectivity.
So if we don't get funding and we want to continue, we got to find 72 grand?
Correct.
Okay. On the switch upgrades?
Yep.
You know, you referenced that we're going to save money on annual maintenance. Is there no maintenance cost on the new switches?
There are, there is maintenance, but whole pieces of equipment are falling off. So we still have maintenance that we do even on new equipment.
Yeah.
But because technology is so new, it requires just less pieces of equipment in general. So the $23,000 that's falling off is, we don't even need that piece of equipment anymore. That's where that's coming from.
Okay. And then, just a couple more, I think it's just on the last piece, yes. It's on the budget, you show us here going up 2.1, but your total is only going up 1.6. So where are we saving a half a million?
On this slide?
Yeah, so this is 1.6, but you showed us 2.1.
Yeah, so there are.
It increases on the prior slide.
Yeah, so there are cost savings elsewhere in the budget that don't fall into these three buckets.
Yeah.
Right? So for instance, one of those cost-saving measures is, the state of Illinois is going to start picking up our internet bill. So there are, there are places in the budget that we can find, find cost-saving measures.
Okay, so that's the biggest one?
Yep.
Last one, on the last slide. So 4.2 million next year, but 1 million is a one-time network charge, so that brings us to 3.2, and then we're going to 3.8. What's the 600,000?
So this, again, it, it's hard to compare this slide to a total overall department budget because there are a lot of moving parts from year to year. I would say that the 1.2 million normalized budget, I would probably look at fiscal year 2022, the one we're currently in, and fiscal year 24. But I can break down those numbers for you.
Yeah, just curious, just big-ticket items.
Sure.
You know, are there?
Yeah.
Did you follow where I went?
That it went down to 3.2 and then there's $600,000.
If you take the million off, yeah. So I'm just curious if there's other investment or just cost escalators, and you don't have to give me an itemized breakdown, just, you know, just what the big drivers are.
Sure, yeah, I can get you those numbers.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Allen?
Yeah, okay. Great work.
Thank you.
Nice job, very nice job. I also appreciate you addressing the cyber issues we had chatted about previously. It's really nice work. Just a few questions, I was going to start on my list. I'm looking at the repair costs.
Yep.
And I would, I would love for somebody at the high schools just to get together and talk about the rates. If you look at the students, right, it's almost two to one between high schools. So if you just have someone get together and talk about what's driving that and things they can do to be better, but two to ones, you know, that's noticeable. I think it's worth talking about.
Sorry, what is two to one?
So if you look at the supplemental sheet that has the number of students that had, where we had occurrences of the issues, if you compare the two high schools, it's almost two to one on each of the three categories. It's, I don't want a lot of work, I just think it's worth the conversation. Some cyber questions.
Sure.
First is, you talked about prioritizing what agencies need to be contacted. I think that's exactly right. Do we have conversations today? Are we engaging outside law enforcement as well as our insurance company on some type of a regular basis, quarterly, annually? I'd recommend it if we're not, maybe is what I should say.
We are, we are in regular contact with Click, our insurance provider, who covers all of our cybersecurity measures. We do stay in regular contact with Sentinel. We do stay in regular contact with Sentinel, which then goes ahead and has their law enforcement connections as well. But directly with law enforcement, we'll have to look into that for sure.
Yes, one of the things we did in my professional career is we just would have, we'd have a contact, we'd touch base, just engage on some, you know, quarterly or every six months or so.
Sure.
Just to, just for learning, right?
Absolutely.
And so when we call, they know who we are, they know who you are or the people are, right? I think that's real helpful.
Sure.
And then you talked about backups and our backup, a little bit of our backup strategy. Have we performed any restores, test restores?
I'd have to, I'd have to find out if we've done test restores. The last, the last one that I can remember off the top of our head, off of my head, is that, I don't think it was this year, but possibly the year before, we did have one of our servers that fed into our student information system that we had to do a full restore for. But that's, that's the last one that I think that is actually not a test that we actually had to see.
Yeah, that's good. One of the things we learned is that while our backups were completing appropriately, when we went to restore it, we actually couldn't do it, right? We learned the hard way. So I just, I mean, some test restores might be a good practice. I fully support on the network hardware, the lifecycle management. That makes a ton of sense. I know it's hard to see the dollars, but I fully agree with you that the cost of maintaining old equipment, patching old equipment far outweighs the cost of putting it on a scheduled planned replacement schedule. So I support that. And then we get to the digital tools, and I have a question about the application portfolio. And for good reason, I get it. We want our teachers to have the right tools to do what the job they need to do. But what tends to happen is that portfolio of applications tends to expand. Everybody kind of has their, their pet or special tool they like and is effective. And I'm not saying we remove it, not at all. What I'm asking or what I'm suggesting, we don't have to talk about now, are just communicating practices and some guidelines that we can contract that portfolio, right? Here's what's being used elsewhere, just to, can you track? Because the less things we have to support, obviously the cheaper it is and the better off we are.
Absolutely.
And I have a question about the overall budget, and again, it's not for tonight.
Sure.
I would love to know when you're talking to your counterparts in other districts, what their IT budget is as a percent of the operating budget compared to ours. Are we under-investing, over-investing compared to our comparative districts? I'd love to know that.
Yeah, I, I can answer a little bit of that. There was a study that was done in conjunction with all Northern, not all, but many Northern Illinois school districts. That particular study is probably four or five years old. I did reach out to see if there was ever, just in kind of informal conversations, we're probably on the lower end of how much total percentage gets allocated to technology.
Yeah, and I'm maybe not surprised by that, but it's, it's hard sometimes when you're looking at all the other financial priorities to, to move technology to the front. But I, I think it's just a good metric to keep our eyes on, to see if we're, again, leading behind and by how much, and do we need to have a conversation about it.
Sure.
So thank you for doing that.
Sure.
Going back to the phishing.
Yes.
Real, just some kind of quick questions on the, first of all, the pop, you said phishing cam, I'm assuming we ran a phishing test, right? We probably sent some emails out and what was, what were the kind of the categories of population? Like, did you include the board members, which I hope you did? I mean, you know, students, what was the, what kind of some general population?
So the populations we did so far was just staff.
Staff?
Yeah, we haven't done students yet. We, we can do students.
I'm not saying we should. I think we'd talk about it, but I'm curious.
Yeah.
I was curious.
I also, I mean, I, the only reason why I'm, it'd be good for a conversation with students is many of our students don't use their email, right? It's, it's staff that really uses their email the most.
And then what was our failure rate roughly? Was it?
Uh, I think, we're going to run another one. I think we were sitting at around 12% I want to say. So.
A little high.
I mean, compared to what, compared to what it has been, we're trending, we're trending in the good direction, so.
Fair. And was there a mitigation put in place on a failure, some additional training or some guidance or follow-up call?
Yeah, so we have a, we have a system that if somebody does fail, only that person gets a message saying, this is why, you know, this is what you clicked on, this is what you should do to prevent it in the future, so on and so forth.
That's great.
Yeah.
And then going to the penetration tests, the smaller internal penetration tests you're talking about, are those, we say internal, done by internal employees?
No, not, there are, there are, there is the, the very comprehensive penetration test that we conducted this year. And then there's also just more critical kind of penetration tests that a company will, will look for. And so we're going to put the, the critical ones on a, on a yearly schedule and the more comprehensive one every three years.
Just some feedback on the full, three years is a long time.
Okay.
And if we could, if we can afford it, I'd love to see that go up, but I understand there's constraints.
Fingers crossed that the government now is possibly paying for penetration tests for schools. So we'll see if that's a possibility.
And I love that you're putting together an incident response team. That makes a ton of sense. One thing I would recommend is running incident response scenarios, like test scenarios, you know, exercising the team a little bit.
Yeah, we have talked about that, yes.
Great, that's excellent. That's all I have, really good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Mr. Spencer?
Proud to say that Rob asked my question. I was going to ask about phishing simulations, but it sounds like you covered it.
So you've been caught before, huh?
What's that?
You've been caught before by a phishing?
No, I get tested all the time.
What's your failure rate?
Zero, 100%, zero percent.
Some of these, some of these tests are crazy good. Like, what we're now experiencing is spoofing, where it looks like it's coming from a legit email address. You can't just look at an email address and say, oh, it's a garbly, you know, whatever. It looks legit, so, yeah, they're getting tricky now.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you. I mean, this is such a huge undertaking and it's, it's something that I think people just happens behind the scene.
Yeah.
And don't really realize how much goes into it. And, and I think we're at a point in time, the question I have, and I should know this being on the finance committee, but were these numbers, like the total department, were those in the projections, the five-year projections? These, like the 4.2 million and the 3.8?
Yes, they are. They, they are probably not all in the right buckets because we may be shifting dollars between local and fed. But yes, overall picture is in there. We'll navigate once we know for sure.
Yeah.
What the difference between local and fed is and build that into the budget for next year.
Okay. I, I just think it's one of, it's one of those things that we have to do, I mean, I don't, I certainly don't understand it as much as Rob does, but, but I do know we need to invest in our infrastructure, especially now with one-to-one. And I think the only other question I had was with the repair costs and what students are responsible for, how, how does that work if we have students that can't afford to do it?
Yeah, so we, we really work with those families. We, we don't necessarily, I guess, want to set the precedent.
Right.
Right? That some people don't have to pay anything.
I mean, things happen, you know?
Exactly, and we've had, we've had instances like that. So if there's an instance where a family, you know, has a hard, a financial hardship of any kind, all they do is work with their building and we'll take any type of payment schedule that they can afford and we'll extend it as far as, as we can.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a few. Just on the, the screen repair and these costs, kind of connected to Susan's question. Is there a way to invest in something that would protect the screen or something like that to lower that?
No. Unfortunately, nothing's going to protect the middle schooler just from dropping it or kicking it around. That's, that's really what we're seeing at the middle school level. They are just really hard on a touchscreen Chromebook. And I guess the, the other way to look at it is the reason why maybe the breakage rate for Chromebook screens is a little higher is because when you move from a non-touchscreen to a touchscreen, the screen itself is more fragile. You go from a plastic, kind of more durable screen that's non-touch to a glass, if you drop it, it's going to shatter like your, like your phone.
So there's benefits to a touchscreen that weren't?
So the reason why we went to a touchscreen is because our, our teachers really expressed the need to want to do more instructionally engaging things that would require the use of a touchscreen. So that's why we went to touchscreen.
Okay. Do you think it would be helpful to charge parents a fee at the beginning of the year and then a full refund when they're returned?
I'm not necessarily, I'm, I'm open to any suggestions about, about what the best way to handle that. I, I think that's a possibility. Another possibility that we might want to investigate is do, is a first repair also free for screens? Knowing that screens account for 90% of our breakage, if a high school student were to break their screen, it's free for them, but automatically costs the district $140, right? So those costs do add up. So it might not necessarily be the first repair is free anymore, but there might be, you might, we might just have to shift the, the schedule a bit. That's something else that we might want to consider if we're concerned about growing costs of repairs.
I think it might be worthwhile to consider over time, finding a way to possibly collect some data on what incentivizes kids and parents, like for example, a feeling of ownership might, you might find that, oh, if we have them pay a little bit, then they're more alerted. You know, there, I think there's some data we could eventually.
Yeah, and I think some of that data too would help with next year as well because what we've heard from other districts who have gone one-to-one that first year is there's some growing pains because students aren't used to taking it back and forth from school. But once they get in the habit of it, things start to hopefully level out a bit as far as that's concerned. So, well, I, I think what I would suggest is let's take a look at next year and see if numbers fluctuate or change and then kind of decide after that maybe.
Yep. Just one following up on Rob's comment. I assume you're working closely with educational services to track which of these digital tools are most effective, you know, for learning. And I want to say that Xern for my fifth grade sons, I, I see Xern every single day and it seems very valuable. I think, I'm assuming these are valuable, but just checking some data to say, if there was data to say, we started using this and we're seeing this at the aggregate, some of those kinds of saying, these are turning out to be a.
Sure.
A really good use.
Yep.
Just data on those digital tools. And then one last question is on the hotspots. We might not know this till next year, but I'm wondering how much of that is families who have no internet access at home or families due to the pandemic had increased users? And I don't know if we'll see a drop only because more people are going back to work.
Yeah, that's a good question. That's something we'll have to be on the lookout for. We've had plenty of hotspots. We've not been short hotspots. So I would, I would feel comfortable in saying that we could hold, we can maintain the current number of hotspots next year and be okay. Another benefit is that there are a number of families that have tapped into government funds to get their broadband bills covered, so they don't even need a hotspot because there's other monies, private monies that they can tap into that we've been educating the community on to go ahead and take advantage of. That's a little bit more permanent than relying on a hotspot.
Yeah, okay. Last question.
Sure.
And you might have stated this, but the one time when you do the overhaul, how often would that happen? Like every 10 years or?
So the overhaul, we hope that if we get the influx of $1 million that we can absorb year to year within our normal operating budget and not have to look at a huge increase down the line. We just now have to use that $1 million to get us to a baseline so that we can absorb it every year through normal operating expenses.
So in how many years would you imagine having to do that again? Or that's a very?
Oh, the whole cycle is about seven years. Not, most equipment doesn't last much longer than seven years, but that's about, every cycle is about seven years. It just depends on what equipment gets replaced in what year.
But I think that the concept though is to get on a replacement cycle so you'll never see that million-dollar boost again.
So like seven years we didn't do that because we didn't know to do that?
I think we, yeah, I mean, I think there, there's some pieces that investing now to get to the point where like you can get on that kind of set replacement cycle will, will avoid, right, this, this piece. And, you know, we, it's catch 22, right? I guess by catch 22, meaning I think we've, we've done a very effective job of getting maximum life out of things, but sometimes that does come at an eventual cost when you've strung things beyond their useful life, that there's a catch-up window. Right, we saw that a little bit with facilities and, and we're seeing that a little bit with technology.
Thank you. Sure.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Spencer.
Okay, there are no discussion items. Written reports were attached to the agenda, monthly financial report, FOIA report, board communication logs, citizens advisory committee report, reports from other board members, there were board committee reports from the social emotional learning committee, finance committee, facilities committee, equity proactive, proactive practices committee, human resources policy committee were attached to the agenda. Is there any other information to share?
Hey Chris, I have a question. On the SCL committee, I had to talk about dress code. What policy number do, I was looking for, what policy number is connected to the dress code or is it more in the handbook?
I don't have the exact number that's specific to dress code, but one of the ones that you approved tonight, it does start the conversation about dress code and the last sentence it does say, look at the student handbook, because that's where it's attached. So I want to say it's, yeah, it's, it's mentioned in there. I think they talk about clothing, appearance, traditional headdresses and head, head, things that people wear that may be religious in intentions. I want to say it's 7160, but I might, I don't have that, I just shut the computer down, sorry. But it's in there, it's in one of the, I can email you.
It's one of the ones that we approved tonight?
Yes.
Approved the post, 7160.
Approved the post. And actually, we had dress code meeting before this meeting and some of the language in there is going to help us with our dress code because we've been talking about just, there are certain students that have different hairdressers, religious and/or other reasons. And the wording in there is going to be implemented into the dress code that we're going to present.
So, so just to clarify, any other revisions we made to the dress code? I know Susan's been, the one brought this up, they'll go into that, 7.160, student appearance?
I think any other revisions you make will likely go into the handbook. I think the kinds of revisions we're, we're looking at will be like, will be more student handbook driven.
Okay.
So they'll come to the full board when the handbooks get brought forward.
Chris loves the student handbook.
He do.
It's a lot of fun.
Dr. Kyle's made it, and.
I enjoy it.
He's going to have made it way more user-friendly. Any other questions or comments? Okay, other reports from board members, any other topics?
I just have, just a little observation. I know we're going to talk about February 23rd, kind of an update on, I guess, masking. I guess I'm just a little nervous about waiting two weeks and knowing that an appeal could happen in that window and the potential strife that might evolve if that happens. I'm just a little nervous about that two-week window. I'm not sure what to do about it. I don't, I don't know that I want to, I'd rather have a really good discussion on February 23rd than to call a special meeting. I'm just, I guess I'm just nervous about what could happen if a decision on the appeal comes down within that timeframe. What, what it's going to do into our classrooms and in our schools. How we're going to communicate that.
And I just want to add, I think that from what I've read, the appeal decision will come between, you know, before that time. So I, there will be some need for discussion.
I mean, so is there a potential we have another emergency meeting ahead of us? Or do we just? I don't, I don't know what, I don't know what I'm asking. I'm just expressing that the situation makes me nervous, given what I've seen in other school districts and what I would expect to see here.
I, I think that we've got, you know, we can, I don't know that there's an answer for that tonight, Brad. I think it's.
I don't know that I'm asking a question.
Yeah, I think it just kind of depends on how things roll out and, you know, we've, we've already got ourselves kind of out there that we want to start having a discussion on the 23rd.
I guess I would just tell you, I think you do what you need to do based on the circumstance. I, I don't think you could attempt to forecast exactly how things may come down and the impact, but I, I think as a board, you came together this weekend when you needed to come together to, so I, I wouldn't. but I, I think as a board, you came together this weekend when you needed to come together to, so I, I, I wouldn't try to... I hear you. I, I think that's an important consideration. I just, I, I would be hesitant to randomly schedule another meeting right now without a real sense of what's going to happen.
Yeah, I'm not requesting another meeting. Like I said, I'd rather make sure that we have a really good discussion and the beginning of a plan or a plan presented on the 23rd. Just makes me, like I said, I've already said it.
Yep.
You know, to me, I think the data we're going to see over the next week or so is probably more important than anything.
I think as we've done all along, we got to just roll with it. And, which is hard, but we just have to roll with it. And we will, as we've done in the past, we rise to the occasion and we do the work. And, um, you know, and I, I think we've seen how much has changed in the last three days and how quickly information is coming, as it has happened all throughout this pandemic. And, um, you know, I think about, I was going through emails for totally different reason. And I found an email from Dr. Schuler to us on February 14th of 2020. And it was something to the effect of, "Talked to the Health Department. There's only a couple cases. We're not worried about it. We have our flu infectious disease policy. We're going to be all right." You know, like it's, looks good. And then a month later, literally a month later, we have the world shut down. So, I think we, we're in a very fluid situation right now. And I think just we as a board need to stay strong as we have been. And like I said, as things move, as fluid as they are, we do the work. And that's where I center myself, is that I, it's always nerve-wracking. This whole thing has been nerve-wracking. And, um, but that was, you know, I, I've said it before. That's why I, I put my name on the ballot, is that we do hard things and hard things are hard. And, um, and that's what we'll do.
Any other questions or comments?
Does this, does this conversation fit with, and there are other, other reports from board members? I wasn't sure if I should, I've already been accused of talking at the wrong time recently.
Yes, I would say this, this would come from any, ask, you know, it says, "Ask reports on topics." I would say that that falls here.
Okay. So, since it was brought up in, in public comment, it would be nice to get some real information out to the community about the apparent appeal that we did, but we really didn't do. That concerns me. When I heard that tonight and we saw the emails yesterday, I don't know how to get it out there, but if there's a way to correct that misinformation, I think it would be helpful.
All right. Topics for future discussion, we have down update on elementary FLS program, Vision 2026 strategic plan. Is there anything else that, um, anybody wants to add for future discussion? Next regular board meeting is March 9th, 2022, 7:00 PM here at Hubble. Announcements, we have a February 23rd, uh, 2022 Committee of the Whole meeting here at 7 o'clock at Hubble. Right now, I'm going to, for closed session, I'm going to move to adjourn to closed session for the purpose of discussing the placement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students, 5 ILCS 120/2, Subparagraph C, Subparagraph 10. May I have a second?
So moved.
Second, by Mrs. Booton, Mrs. Hutchinson, will you call the roll? Yes.
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 There is no action expected after a following closed session. Our meeting is adjourned.